Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. Presentation from Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau on new walking tour of Franklin iPad application.
This is really cool. Yeah, it's...
Can you all hear me? Good. I'm going to restart this so you can see it from the very beginning, but give you a little bit of background. The... Tell me if I knock it completely off. About two years ago, we found that we were frustrated with the six-page photocopyed, no-photograph walking tour guide that we were handing to people because we would see them walking around town and pointing at buildings trying to figure out exactly which one they were looking at based on a verbal description. And it always bothered us. So with the advent of technology, we started looking into a way that we could put this into an electronic application. And some of you may have heard this story, but it actually was my mother who referred me to a friend of mine from growing up that had worked with America Online in the early days and basically was putting his money into venture capital programs and was developing apps now. So we contacted him. We got this app for the iPad at about a fourth of what the market value is. I won't tell you that price just to protect him, but we feel really fortunate to have something of this quality. We designed it for the iPad, not the iPhone or the Android. Basically, the cost was so minimal for us that we were able to invest some extra money into actually having iPads available. So we have 10 iPads available at the visitor center that our visitors can borrow or rent, so to say, in exchange for making sure that they've left us credible information for security purposes. But it does have a tracking device, and we can shut it down and wipe it off completely if, for some reason, somebody were to take it. But I'll give you a quick intro and let you see what it is that our visitors will see. The application itself is available on the iTunes Store. And if you look right down here in the lower corner, you'll see the Franklin Tour app. And if you just click on the app itself, it'll open up. It was done by Brody Productions here. It's a 35-second video, and then it goes away. On multiple openings of the app, you can actually push a skip intro and it'll bypass that video for you. On the left-hand side, you'll see there are a number of what we call badges that will give information about Franklin. You've got everything from information on the Visitors Bureau. The actual visitor's guide is downloaded onto this application so that people can take a look at it from wherever they are. Anytime you touch a photo on the screen, it goes full screen, but basically it'll allow us to put the entire visitor's guide online as well so that people have that. In the lower corner here, we X-out, goes back to the main screen. We have information on DFA and the members there. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was that we didn't compete with or hurt the business of a private walking tour called Franklin on Foot. And so we actually worked with Margie Thesson to help develop this app and create it in a way that it wasn't competing but complements what she does, and we feature her as one of the badges on here as well. The Tennessee Trails and Byways Program is here, the Heritage Foundation, and then Franklin's Charge were the badges we chose to put on the side. Just touching that side screen will make it go away. Sorry, my hands aren't used to being on the big screen here. And if you look at the screen, you'll see the blinking icon down below. That tells you where you're located. The map itself was created so that there are loops that people can follow. And you'll see a different color for each of the loops, and they have catchy titles, anything from Arts and Antiques to Haunts and Headstones, the Great American Main Street, and the Historic Homes of Hensyville. Anywhere you see an icon, there's information behind that badge. We also have all of the Civil War trails, signs, information included on here, and they have a slightly different-looking icon, but they're all on this map as well. So anytime you touch an icon, it'll pull up a screen. It'll give you the information. If we have a historic photo on the house, it'll give that. The text does roll up and down. And anytime we have more than one photo, there'll be a small dot at the bottom that tells you how many extra photos there are in that particular... for that particular icon. So again, the text here scrolls up and down. We have the opportunity to update this once a quarter, so we are currently in process of trying to collect additional home information on the homes in Hensyville. We felt like that was a little bit lacking, and we're making any adjustments that we see to the program as we go along. If for some reason you manage to wander way off the course, it's pretty easy to touch the Home button, and it'll take you right back to the main screen there. And then the other great part is if you have your own Facebook account, you can also tap on the Facebook button, and it'll pull up, allow you to log into your Facebook account and then post what a wonderful city Franklin is on your wall, telling all your friends that they should come and visit. So we think it's got some great bells and whistles to it. We'll continue to work on it and bring in more and more applications like this, and we found great response so far. The first three days, we had 400 downloads off of the iTunes Store. It is free on the iTunes Store. It's available for iPad, but we think the downloads are really taking off more quickly than we had expected. We know from our research that about 47% of all visitors to Franklin are here visiting friends and relatives, and so this is a great way to put the tour of Franklin in the hands of our residents so that they can be ambassadors and tour guides. We see there's great opportunities for school groups, schoolchildren, bus tours that may come into town to be able to talk through without having to hire somebody. Maybe they're coming in a busy season where some of our private guides are already busy. We just think there are a lot of opportunities, and we continue to look to see where this goes. It's been well-received. Surprisingly, the most of the folks that have come in the visitor center, when they find out we have the application, instead of asking if they can borrow one of ours, they run back to their car and grab theirs. So we've been pleasantly surprised at how many people actually have their own iPads. But anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, we're really excited about this, bringing some good PR to Franklin and being able to get the word out about our historic districts downtown.
How unique is this app in the Convention and Visitors Bureau world, doing something like this?
It's still relatively new. There are few cities that are doing this. Some have private ventures that have taken this on. We find that by making it available for free, the number of downloads is probably somewhere in the 10 to 20 times what you would get if it was a fee-based app, so we're excited about making that free. The one thing that we think sets us apart is the fact that we're making the iPad available for folks to be able to rent from the visitor center if they don't have one. So in some ways, we talked about it as the Segway Tour. You know, you may not own a Segway, but it'd be fun to rent one and do that. If you don't own an iPad, it'd be great to rent one and try it out, as well as taking the tour of town.
Mark, are you going to be using this feature in some of your advertising?
We have found that the icon for the app itself has been very popular, so we may start using that more and more. We are using the QR code, which directs people to our website, and the website has the ability to download. So we are using it some in our advertising and definitely looking for the PR value. We've had it picked up all across the country. Newspaper reporter in Omaha, Nebraska called to ask about it. So it's been interesting to see the response that we've gotten from this.
On Times Square.
Yeah.
And Times Square, yes. We... With one of the venues that we use to get the word out, we were able to have the app show up on Times Square and then have a photograph of it there in Times Square announcing the Franklin Tour app as well.
On the board.
On April 20th, yes.
Let me ask you, I've got a quick question. When you charge the people $10 to rent those apps, do you not also take a credit card or something in case they walk away?
Yes.
I hadn't asked you that the other day, and I was curious.
You can steal one, but we're going to charge you $800.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Pretty exciting. Thank you all. Thanks for coming, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Number four, consideration for professional services agreement with Norman Hall &amp; Associates for property review appraisals for the Hillsborough Road Improvements Project in the amount not to exceed $21,000. Mr. Parker?
As you recall, we have gone through the contracts with T-Dot. We've also gotten a contract approved through you with Stanford &amp; Associates for some appraisals. With the T-Dot process, we have to do review appraisals, and that's what this is for, is to get that review appraisal process started, so it's just another step.
Everybody good?
Yep.
We are working on the feedback issue, so hopefully we'll make some progress on the feedback issue.
Not in my ears, then. That's good to know.
It's not, yeah.
Next would be consideration of professional services agreement with Smith-Sectman-Reed for the design of the utility relocations for the Mack Hatcher Parkway Extension Project not to exceed $85,000.
Again, we have entered into the agreement with T-Dot for the utility relocations, I think at the last meeting or maybe the last month. But anyway, we have to do some design for this. We do not have the timeframe of our own staff to be able to do this because it needs to be completed by the middle of next month. So we've asked for the proposal from Smith-Sectman-Reed, who has been working on the utilities along Hillsborough Road, and that's what this is for, is to get the design for the utilities for the extension of Mack Hatcher. A good portion of the work is actually utility relocations along Hillsborough Road where Mack Hatcher comes in, and when we get this all designed and go through the process, we expect to be able to get reimbursements from T-Dot for some of this work that we were going to be paying for as part of Hillsborough Road. So we should be able to... And we expect this money, this design funds, to be reimbursable by T-Dot also.
Fully reimbursed, this portion?
We expect that it will be fully reimbursable, but right now, as the contract reads, it doesn't add up to this amount of money, but that was a previous estimate of what the work was going to be, and it's more than what that previous estimate was based on. So we'll be working with them and trying to get that all worked out within the next few weeks.
So it has a submittal by... Is June date? What is that?
The June date is when we're supposed to have the design completed and submitted to them, to them being T-Dot, the utilities section of T-Dot.
So that's a real date?
It is a real date that we're supposed to meet, and this is to try to keep the whole project, whole project being Mack Hatcher Extension, in a timeframe that we have been working with T-Dot on, which would lead us to a... Being able to let the contract in December. I know everybody's read the paper as far as delayed, but we're still working on what we've been working with, with T-Dot, to be able to do that.
Let me speak to that a little bit. Essentially, T-Dot policy talks about not funding something specifically in their three-year plan until everything is complete inclusive of the property acquisition. So the fact that that wasn't included in that recently released three-year plan is part of that policy. But I'll tell you, they've consistently also provided prioritization to projects that have local funding in it, and we are in that pipeline in terms of the right-of-way already being approved and the design process being approved. And so we would see that, I think, move into a funding range very quickly once those pieces are completed. And the other element to that is remember in September of this year, we're going to bid, or T-Dot's going to bid, the widening of the northeast section of Mack Hatcher to make that a four-lane stretch of road. And I think the thinking is to have those components just, one, go right into the other. Do that widening first, which makes sense, you know, enhance the existing roadway, and then do the extension of the roadway following that. And one of the things that also happens in the three-year plan, they don't program every dollar. As you go each year out, there are dollars that are intentionally unprogrammed because you know you have projects that are in process. So I think, you know, the fact that that wasn't listed does not mean that project will not get funded for three years. It means it's not on that list because all the hoops haven't been gone through. There are 45 properties we need to acquire for Mack Hatcher. We've acquired 37 of them. Those remaining properties have now gone into the condemnation process, and somewhere around 60 to 90 days, we should be able to proceed with those properties. That process may still be ongoing, but we're able to have basically an order to proceed...
It's an order of possessions, what it's referred to.
Yeah. So I just wanted to give you a little more clarity on that project and how that works and how those pieces fit together. And I think it's good news overall that the widening gets started this fall, and the extension, I think we can see something, hopefully move forward to that within the next year or so to have that actually proceeding.
Well, we're still on track, then, what you just said. Let me reiterate this to make sure I understood what I heard you say. We're still on track, the T-Dot bid for the northeast section for this fall.
Northeast will bid in September.
Okay.
The expansion will bid in September. That's pretty well locked in at this point. Where the extension fits in is less certain because we've got to get these other pieces done, but there's the capability to move forward, you know, fairly quickly after all these elements are done and once T-Dot's able to fund it. It could be a year out, but either way, we're continuing to move forward and see that project happen.
Number six, consideration of contract award to utility fleet sales limited of Bryan, Texas in the amount not... In the total amount of $59,000 for a used 2003 International Bucket Truck for the Parks Department. $23,000 to lease a new truck, budgeted in a bunch of numbers for fiscal year 2011.
Thanks for not reading that.
Just tell us the bottom line here.
Sure. What we're looking at is to purchase a used vehicle instead of a new vehicle. That would save the city around $80,000 to do multiple-purpose type activities within the Parks Department, but also, as we've seen with weather and that type of thing, assist with other public works departments as well when it comes time for this. But yes, we did budget it. We put it in the budget, but we are going to cover the rest of the remaining within the fiscal year budget. So we do have the funds.
Is this going to be delivered to us in the winter here because there's not a lot of it left?
Yes, ma'am. It would be driven within the next 10 days if it is approved.
This is on both agendas. So we get this approved tonight and get it rolling, literally.
Physically, yes.
Have we looked at... What have we done to look at the truck?
The fleet maintenance is actually... They basically have bid specifications online, and so we work with our fleet maintenance to call, talk with mechanics, do a full through, but we also have a 30-day warranty. If, once it comes on site and there is something wrong, we have the right to completely return the vehicle. Or within 30 days, if something is wrong, then we'll repair.
Because eight or nine years old is fairly old.
That's exactly my question.
You go through the hydraulics, and I'm not a mechanic, but you go through the hydraulics and all of that, that's... There's got to be some wire and tear on that truck.
Well, your concern's mine, sort of what Clyde's talking about here is, so 30 days, but do we have any other kind of warranty on it?
Not past 30 days. Not past 30 days. 30 days, then it would be the city.
So what is that? What does a new one cost? $80,000 plus the $60 that you're giving?
Yeah, so it'd be $140,000.
And the plan was, though, just to lease one, right?
We were going to... Well, lease purchase. We were going to... This would have been a budget obligation over the next three or four years to purchase that property, or multiple years to purchase that property, or the piece of equipment, sorry. So it's really a lease purchase, and this allows us to buy it and save $80,000 plus financing costs over the years.
What's the life of these trucks?
It depends on the usage of what the truck... Because this is a 2000, I believe, 2003. Basically, you're looking at anywhere from 10 years, if it's commercialized, that type of thing, up to 20. It really just depends, but this company also does refurbishments, and so everything is brand-new except for there are some hydraulics and some things in which they've done. But again, I've had to rely on the fleet maintenance department, the head of fleet, David Barker, to walk us through that process, ask the right questions, and again, they will do a thorough inspection once it's on site if approved.
It seems like if they don't want it, why would we want it? If the person who had it hadn't wanted it anymore?
Well, this is a company that just deals with refurbishment, and they sell them.
They got it. They got it from somebody who had used it.
They probably received it.
And if those people that had used it don't want it anymore, why would we want it? Why would we want something that didn't work? Why wouldn't they let them refurbish it for them? I just don't... We don't need another piece of junk.
Well, I think we have evaluated enough to think that it's going to be a useful piece of equipment. We have the time to evaluate it as it gets here. We do look for opportunities to get a value on it in terms of demo equipment or, in this case, used equipment that can still do the job. You know, it's an opportunity, and an opportunity to save a significant amount of money. We will fully use the 30-day warranty period to evaluate the equipment, that it's what we think it is in terms of the quality and that it can function for us for a significant period of time.
But unlike tree crews, is what Mr. Stuckey was saying, unlike tree crews, we were not on... We're not using it every single day, but we will be using it every week. So it's not like we're going to put, you know, 40 hours or plus on this vehicle unless there was a, you know, some type of emergency situation.
When we get that in-house, those first 30 days, even though we've had it checked out, will we also be checking that out in-house?
That's one of the benefits of having a fleet department like we do.
We have someone capable, yeah, at fleet to check that thoroughly.
Correct.
And see if there's any rights here.
It would actually be delivered to fleet, not directly to the department, so they would do their thorough inspection prior to.
Mm-hmm. And I would trust that you would use those three days to make a decision.
My comment, Mr. Mayor, is Lisa says that you mentioned other budget things. You're not commenting as wanting a new vehicle because you... Did I hear you say that there was other things that you probably could use? Sounds like you're trying to manage your budget and do some other things.
We are. We are looking at the budget, but because this is not extended over several years' process, it looked like, according to our research, because they did research this quite a bit with our purchasing department as well as fleet and the arborist, we're going to give up a few things in order to obtain this in this fiscal year budget, and that would save money again in the next couple of years, or three years over time. But at the same time, we, you know, if we got five to six years out of this particular vehicle, then we've got our money's worth out of it. And we feel as if, again, we're not going to be using it at what a tree service company would be using it, even though it will be some of the same functions at times. The hours in the... On the bucket to driving the vehicle would just not be at that same pace.
Lisa, in the past, would we have to contract this service out, or did we rent a bucket truck? Or how did we deal with this?
Well, our street department currently has a bucket truck, and so we work with them to coordinate. But normally, we've rented or we have service. It's a contract service for those type things.
Eric Howells, it's a streets truck.
Actually, I don't have...
And do they use that quite frequently?
They do for signal maintenance and other work they do. Do you know how old it is? I don't know if it's on my head.
We have two. One is a signal truck, and the other is a two-man bucket. Two-man bucket we've had for about three or four years, and the other one, I think, for about six years.
I certainly don't want to... But I... Let me see. I want to... Let's see how I want to phrase this. I take one of Joe's, and I have a new one for the streets department.
We hadn't thought about that.
You want to spend $80,000 more?
You want to give him a new truck?
That's the opportunity we're looking for.
Yeah.
And Joe's...
What did Joe do?
You're on Joe's Christmas card list right now.
Look, I'm not sure that... I'm not real sure that if you go get something that's nine years old...
You can loan to her.
I'm not sure that you've got... I'm not sure that you've... If you go out and buying something that's nine years old that somebody else has used, even though it's been refurbished, you've got a ton of hours on it possibly somewhere. And...
Be repairing it?
You know, if you're talking $60,000 or $140,000 for a new, that looks like a lot for that used truck to me versus the new one that you could buy for $140,000. I support whatever you want, but I'm just saying to you that you don't want something that's going to stay down half the time, that you can't use, that you've got doing something other too all the time. And if Joe's got something that's satisfactory, if he uses his four days out of five or whatever it is, and you want something that you're going to use for a day out of five or two days out of five, then you know what he's got.
I told you, how old are yours? That makes sense.
A two-bucket truck, which is our newest one, is either three to four years old, and a single bucket, I think, is about six years old.
So the single bucket is equivalent to this single bucket here?
Yes, sir.
Do it however you want to do it.
That might be a good idea. Might be...
Go ahead, Ellen.
Let me ask you a question. When it said we had $23,000 for the lease purchase this year, and then it says for five years, but that would mean five additional years, wouldn't it? Because that's how you get up to $140,000.
Yeah, this is an ongoing obligation that you'd have till you purchased it. When we say lease, we really mean lease purchase.
Right. But would it be... But that's $140 if you leased first just if you just bought outright. Would it be cheaper, I would think, wouldn't it?
It'd be a little bit cheaper. I mean, we've got a pretty favorable lease term, but it would be a financing charge we'd have to look at exactly the difference.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the difference is.
You'd save a little bit.
Enough to make it do... Enough to do it?
I mean, you know, you've got an $80,000 savings. You've got a little bit of financing that you'd pay in addition to that. You know, it's a matter of the opportunity to save some money and use it elsewhere as opposed to how you might use the new equipment. And I think Lisa's judgment was the used was a good one because of the... It isn't something used every day, but something that's a regular part of operations, and that's why I thought it was valuable. We hadn't really explored the option that Alderman-Barnhill brought up, so maybe we'll huddle a little bit on that.
Hold on. If you want to do this, I support either one you want to do. But I know that if you're going to use, that you know what you're getting, if you've got something that you've used versus something else. But, you know, do it however you want to do it. I appreciate the... I appreciate you looking at saving $80,000, but you're also spending $60 to save $80 and potentially whatever maintenance issues that you have coming up on that $60,000 that you've got to spend, so...
I'm overall uncomfortable with the homework that Lisa and David Barker and fleet maintenance have done, but, you know, the question you raised is a good one. Hadn't thought about the streets, where we are in the life cycle of the one streets is using now. So we'll talk a little bit between meetings and...
Well, when you go to look at those variables, can you also look at, you know, you're taking a look at the money that we're saving here, what we could elsewhere, but how does that... Can you give us some scenarios of what the cost of the maintenance would be on that truck here for us? We wouldn't have any idea, would we?
No, not until it's still...
Till we get it. Because, you know, if you're saving money, but then also you're putting money into the maintenance of that truck, how much maintenance is going to go into that over so many years that we have that truck, and what's cost benefit there versus, you know, biting the bullet and spending a little bit more money and then transferring that truck to your department?
We're making a calculated, you know, estimate about how good the refurb is on the used equipment, and is that worth the savings that you get and the function that Lisa has in mind. As I said, we'll talk a little bit together between meetings and maybe get to you when it's on for the vote.
Okay.
If that's okay, because we just haven't had that conversation. I don't want to make a judgment without talking.
My other comment was...
I think my other comment was, so now Streets is using, there's enough that, that the sharing is not going to work anymore, or is that...
Correct, but it's more on that day-to-day use, such as in the last two storms that we've had. We've got twelve facilities that need roof repair, or that type of thing. A lot of times, we were contracting that work out, but a lot with these Street Trees, they are having to take care of that, and we're working with them as well, but that sharing is getting harder and harder, just because of the demands that we have. And, and the parts, we have a lot of trees down, and a lot of things in which we can assist, but we also are looking at it from, really, emergency standpoint, over the last two to three years, it's constantly, we're having these storms. So, if we can assist as well, we're going to do that, if possible.
We'll look at it.
We will. That's a good idea. Thank you.
G'do. Was there another comment? I'm sorry. Considerations acceptance of certificate of correction for survey of the Eastern Flank Battlefield Park and Lot Four, the linked subdivision.
The memo explains what happened. You have two different surveys, over the years, for two different pieces of property. There is a discrepancy. It's not unusual for that to happen. And what this is, is a correction that's come about, and it was noticed during preparation package for Boza. But, this is a correction to rectify that, and basically, what it boils down to, is the city loses about fifty square feet off of Eastern Flank Battlefield property. Mike's going to object to it, so...
What lot is this? We usually get a map of the thing, so... What is Lot Four on this? Is it on file?
It is, it is the very last lot, on the left, going down Carton Lane.
So, Newhurst's house?
Yes, it was, it was the one that we, that before, we, before the city purchased the golf course, it had a golfer's easement, which prevented anybody from really building on it. When we purchased, of course, we gave up the golfer's easement, because we weren't going to, even though some staff wanted to keep the golf course.
So, who gets the property?
We didn't get, the, the property will revert to the Lot Four. But we just, we have to have board approval, to do any of that property thing.
Number eight, consideration amendment number one, to the agreement concerning adjustment of boundaries of Franklin and Brentwood, south of Split Log Road, and north of the proposed McEwen Drive Extension.
This is the subject we've talked about a couple of times, especially as we look at capital investment projects, and an existing obligation the city has, related to an agreement with the city of Brentwood, back in two thousand and seven. And this deals with the completion of the extension of McEwen, east of Wilson Pike. A lot of times, we refer to that as McEwen Five. And this is essentially addressing that issue, and updating that agreement. One of the things we had talked about with you, in, in principle, was that we would change the agreement to be more driven by development, as opposed to a hard date in the future. And we had had an understanding, in general, with Brentwood, that that made sense, given what had happened, or how the world had essentially changed, in terms of the pace of development, and, and what was happening with that, and that that was a, a better way to look at that. And what staff has done, both at the city of Brentwood and the city of Franklin, is put our heads together, and, and tried to describe what that looks like, and what would that threshold be. And essentially, what we've brought forward, is a, a threshold that deals with the receipt of at least fifty percent of the funding from the private, or contributing parties, which are essentially the private developers involved, that that would be our trigger, and that we would then deliver the road, within twenty-four months of that threshold being met. So, that would be something we could work from. David and Shawna have worked on this agreement with, with Brentwood, and so they can address any specifics with that. We're the first to take a look at, and have a discussion with it. The Brentwood City Commission, this is on their agenda for their May twenty-third meeting, so...
They may pull it.
They, they're kind of looking to see where this discussion goes, I think, to see if there's any more discussion.
They talked today, they said they wanted us to take formal action, before they took formal action.
We won't. We would not take action until the twenty-fourth would be the soonest. So, I think, you know, we'll just have our discussion, see where you want to go. It's on their agenda, but it's kind of appropriate. We're making the request, that we get some direction from you, that you're comfortable, and then they, they respond, so...
This makes sense, because it should be developer-driven, and that section shouldn't even be addressed, till we start getting Phase Four done. And, and there was actually no need for that road, at all, until there's a need for development. And I, I would support this, because I think, you know, we need to have at least fifty percent in hand, before we would go forward with it. So, I like how that's written.
Well, we have to do something, otherwise, or worse, we have to do twenty-two.
Right, and we need to do this. It's got to be done.
We would then need to, once it's completed, describe the, the, the city's agreed, and we still have to...
We just have to bring it to the judge, with, as an agreed order, agreed subsequent order, and then the judge would have to sign it. I can't see why a judge wouldn't sign that, but we do have to ask permission from the judge.
I've been talking to, I've been out speaking in different venues, with Word One, HAs, and different functions, and I've shared this with a lot of people, because this comes up. They want to know about the phase from Wilson Pike, over to the eastern part of the city. And I've shared this with them, what we were going to do, and hopefully, what this was going to say, and they're very supportive of moving ahead with this kind of document.
I just haven't seen recently, what's, what's the projected amount of money involved here? That's a good idea, but you don't know it off the top of your head.
For phase, for the...
No, for this, for the overall...
I don't, I don't recall what it is, right offhand, but I think, probably what's in the CIP is...
The CIP, I think, is, is that a...
What's in the CIP, I believe, is the full four-lane...
As I say, four-lane versus two-lane.
And that's not, we're talking about two lanes, except, like, right at Wilson Pike, or something, but, yes, we're talking about initially building only two lanes. Designing for four, building for two. And I think that cost is actually set up to be a full four-lane.
I think it says on there, that it is, as I say, I just thought you would have...
Yeah, we've got a total of twelve million.
Is Brentwood on one side of the street, and we're on the other?
What brought all this about, was actually, Brentwood was wanting to get some right-of-way for Split Log Road. And a portion of that area, of the properties that fronted Split Log Road, were in the city of Franklin. It had been annexed into the city of Franklin. So, they could not go to condemnation procedures, because of that. In dealing with that, then, we, the city of Franklin, actually, we had a lawsuit with Brentwood, concerning it. And in dealing with trying to settle that, it was finally agreed, that the city of Franklin would DNX what would be north of this extension of McEwen Drive, and that the new common boundary between the cities would be the north right-of-way, of what was laid out to be McEwen Drive, east of Wilson Pike. So, we've gone through the preliminary design process, just to get that set up. The other issue concerning it, was that a good portion of that property, north of where McEwen Drive is going, actually drains into the city of Brentwood, and they, so being in their boundaries, then, they're, they're subject to serving sewer, which then, we will not have to have another pump station, or two, actually, I think it was going to be two.
Yeah.
And so, we eliminate that, that situation of having to have that sewer. So, they'll be taking that sewer into their system, versus us. So, saying all that, the, the agreement was set up to, to really DNX, and for Brentwood to annex, that property's north of where the alignment of McEwen Drive would be, so...
To get back with you on the cost, it is actually in our CIP. It's about twelve million, it's twelve point, just under twelve point four million. We've already spent about three hundred and eighty thousand on preliminary engineering at this point.
So, an additional twelve million, that would be to do the four-lane.
That's the four-lane.
That's the four-lane.
So, that, what we're talking on, in terms of two-lane, will be?
No, it'll be more than half.
That's what I thought.
We, when we do that, we do more grading, and we do some additional works, where when you come back to add the other two lanes, you don't have to tear up as much. So, it's, you can't really go to just half.
No, I know, I just wanted to do that.
It would be reduced, and it depends a lot on what we have to do with the Columbia Gulf Transmission gas lines. There's three gas lines, major gas lines, that we cross, and we had it worked out with them, that we were not going to have to relocate their lines, but in the future, depending on what happens, they could always change that. So, if they do that, that's another million dollars, or better, so... But anyway, that's to be looked at, as we get to final design.
This certainly seems like a step in the right direction.
Number nine, consideration ordinance two oh nine dash fifty-five, an ordinance to amend the city of Franklin Municipal Code Title XI, Chapter Four, offenses against the peace and quiet. And kind of like, what I'd like to do, is maybe let Chief Rohinsky and Shawna kind of talk about it a little bit. And I asked them, when we talked a bit today, not only talk about what the ordinance does, but what it does not do. And then I know we probably have some people that are interested in commenting to it, so, about it, so I think what we'd like to do, is your presentation, have some board questions, and then citizens can address it, and I'll have the prerogative to limit how long it takes, according to how many people we have.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask, as they're discussing it, would it be possible to tell about the additions and deletions to the current ordinance? Because a lot of times, we have that, you know, with red strike-throughs, and red additions, and everything, and it wasn't here, and that was kind of difficult. That would, it would have been better.
Changes the decibels, take them out.
Yeah, but still...
We can provide you with that.
Yes, that would have been helpful, but as, as they're talking, I think they can do that.
And I think Shawna...
We reorganize it so much, that it really was starting new.
Shawna can walk through what was already in there, and what's not in there now, a little bit, too, to help you with that. And I'll just introduce this overall, to say, a couple, starting a couple of years ago, we had some discussions about this, with citizens raising concerns, some citizens raising concerns, desiring enforcement, the city staff looking at it from an enforcement standpoint, and seeing some complexities, and some, some problems with our ability to effectively enforce it, and for the public to understand it. So, our desire was to try to simplify this, make it more understandable overall, so that both citizens who are impacted, and businesses that may be impacted as well, can easily understand what the standard is, that we're trying to work with. And so, that was what Chief Rohinsky and our city attorney Shawna Billingsley tried to put together, something that was more directly understandable to the public, and to those charged with enforcing it. As with any noise ordinance, they are complaint-driven. We don't drive around listening for noise ordinance violations. We really respond to them, when, when someone is impacted negatively, and feels that there's a violation in place, we respond to it in that manner. So, I think that's important to understand, that that's the very nature of the enforcement of a noise ordinance like this, that it's driven by folks that are disturbed by it, and feel that a violation's in, taking place, and then we respond and take action on that, with this being the goal, to make it something that is understandable and enforceable to the citizens, and to the folks charged with enforcing it. I'll let Shawna and Chief Rohinsky talk through some specifics on it, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and facilitate the discussion.
Okay. I want to start with talking about our current noise ordinance. Our current noise ordinance already prohibits amplifiers after eleven o'clock, until seven o'clock, within fifty feet from the noise. It already says that. That's not, we're not adding anything new, we're not changing anything. The only thing that this ordinance does, really, is take out the decibel requirements. The police could, after eleven o'clock, cite anyone for having live music and amplifiers after eleven o'clock in the city. They just could. Having better backup, they would use the decibel reader to enforce the fifty feet, and that just seems silly. If you can hear it at whatever feet you want, if you can hear it, that's all you really need. You don't need the decibel reader on top of the fifty feet requirement. Your ordinance already says that. So, what we did, was we took out the decibel provisions, and how, how that works, having to have a decibel reader. All we're saying is, if an officer called on a complaint can hear it, from however many feet away you say is a violation, at whatever time we decide is the time you need to stop making such loud noise, then it's a violation. They don't have to have a decibel reader to further determine that. What we also did, was we added exceptions. There are a lot of exceptions that we thought were pretty important. For example, this is page five.
Where it says exemption?
Yeah. The way the ordinance was drafted, it almost seemed like using your snow blowers and your lawn mowers was a violation. So, we just wanted to make sure it's clear, that you can use those just between the hours of seven AM and nine PM. Right now, it looks like it's a violation to use them anytime, and that's just, that's not what we want, that's not what we mean. And then, the, the other thing we did, was we made a distinction between residential and commercial, and that's on page two, which gives you guys the opportunity to say, should there be a difference in a residential area, versus a commercial area? We need to figure out what local mixed-use and regional mixed-use means, for you guys. That's the only, those are the only two zoning districts that haven't been put in this. I think those were created since two thousand and nine, and those haven't been added into this ordinance. And we need to decide, do you think those are more commercial, or more residential? In talking with Mica, it does appear that they, when you think of a mixed-use, think about the Galleria and McEwen Place. And when you think about ML, think about Village, Gateway Village, and Through the Green. So, those are the kind of subdivisions we're talking about. Do you think that's more residential, or do you think that's more commercial? And you'll just have to let us know where you want those two zones.
Okay, you just said ML, Gateway, and Through the Green. What was the other one? The, the big Galleria and McEwen?
Is the, is the MX.
MX.
Mm-hmm. You need to think about where you want to put those, because they're, they're pretty much fifty-fifty, could be. But the difference is, with Great Gateway Village and Through the Green, and maybe even McEwen, you may be living right above a restaurant or retail facility, so, does that make a difference to you, in how you handle that?
And to be clear, right now, the way this is written, the same standard is in place for both residential and commercial. If you want to give direction to differentiate between those, you can, but we've defined them in here, and right now, it is considered a violation after ten PM, and until...
Ten or eleven?
Right now, it's ten.
Ten PM to seven AM, so...
Maybe you get the eleven.
Well, the eleven is what the current ordinance says.
That's what the current one says.
Oh, wait, okay.
But we changed it to ten, because in two thousand and nine, when we were talking about it, you guys liked ten o'clock better than, than eleven o'clock. So, we just kept that. And I kept the fifty feet in both areas, because I don't need to decide where the boundary is, you do. You need to tell us, because right now, the ordinance says anything at fifty feet, whether it's residential or commercial, doesn't matter, fifty feet, amplification after eleven's a violation. You need to tell us, do you like that, or do you want to make a difference between residential and commercial? I think you do, because you wanted us to divide, divide it out. So, what is that? You know, do you want to look at commercial districts at a hundred and fifty feet? Or do you want to look at residential, just if you can hear it in a residential area, it's a violation, no matter how many feet? You just need to think about that.
Do you have mixed use?
Right, where do you want the mixed use?
What category do you want to put mixed use in?
Well, and not only that, as you say, if you're, if you are...
Let's let them finish before we change the train of thought.
Indeed, in the discussion, the previous ordinance was problematic for enforcement, in terms of...
Talk a little louder.
The previous ordinance was problematic, in terms of enforcement, for a variety of reasons. There were some parts of the city, where the ambient noise was actually over what the ordinance allowed. There was the issue of calibration, how often the, the decibel meter had to be calibrated. There was actually a, an independent establishment that went out and purchased their own decibel meter. Problems arose, as far as the sensitivity and the calibration of ours versus theirs, which decibel meter was going to be considered more accurate, if we were to pursue it in court. It was also problematic, in terms of, if we went to a house party, and expected someone to realize that they were in violation of the city ordinance, the answer that you would get was, would be that, "I don't own a decibel meter, can you explain to me what seventy-five decibels sounds like?" We thought it was much cleaner, and much simpler, to ask people to adhere to a standard that they, they could understand. So, in, in our discussion, that was why we really erred on the side of trying to take a common-sense approach, and get away from something as problematic as an electronic meter.
But even, even...
But even, even with all that, amplification after eleven, fifty feet away, right now in your, in your ordinance is a violation. We haven't been citing them, but we could be. It's not, there's no change, that, that's not, that's not a change. So if you have live music after eleven, and you can hear it fifty feet away from the property, it's a violation, with or without a decibel reader. That's what the ordinance currently says.
I think it's significant, the top of page six addresses specifically applications for special permit for exceptions to this ordinance.
And that was there too, that's, that's in the current ordinance as well.
So the board would have the ability to issue exceptions and exemptions to the ordinance.
So Main Street Festival, the carnival can last until midnight because it's for a short period of time, and it comes before you, and you set forth the parameters for that, for that event. You're allowed to do that.
Okay, you're going. Yes, sir.
Okay. Start.
Let's do something else. This is gonna be really tough, I think, because-
Well, we can move on.
No.
I think probably we'll-
No, I don't wanna move on. Oh gosh. This is so, you know, it can be very subjective as well, cause somebody could say, "What, fifty feet, I can hear it, but fifty feet, I can't hear it." But to me, I did, I did a little bit of research on this because we still have issues like at Tin Roof on Corthers, and we've, of course, brought before this body, Buggin' Up Pig, and then we've got Lilybells, and we have CJ's Off the Square, and Red House, and you name it, more and more. And this is not just a downtown problem, because Tin Roof now has, they're, they're in Corthers over there, and during one of their nights where they open up the sides, and people can come and go outside, and it's a nice weather, you wanna do that, but you're gonna hear that music.
And they can do that until eleven.
Until eleven, that they can do that, right. But at twelve midnight, I'll go over there and stand on the, and there's six lanes, and you can go straight across the street and stand on the sidewalk, and walk up and down that sidewalk, right in front of the East Cool Springs housing area. And you may not hear that. But you can drive into that East Cool Springs neighborhood, drive up the block, take a right and take another right, and go up way up on top of the hill, and go into one of the cul-de-sacs. And the way the music comes and bounces off the hill, it comes into that cul-de-sac, and you hear that music like this in the cul-de-sac. It's way more than fifty feet away. That's, you know, maybe a quarter of a mile. And I could hear the music in that cul-de-sac where I stand across the street from that, and of course, Corthers is quite a, a wide street, and I'm not hearing that music. That's a different situation as well. So we have to know that this is not just a downtown issue. We've got, as you said, mixed use, you've got PUDs, you've got, and then you have West Haven, you've got McKay's Mill, you've got some other density places where you're maybe fifteen, twenty, thirty feet or less away from another house. Well, look at Mayor Moore. I mean, fifty feet, maybe two residents down from him. And that's not gonna work there.
Yeah, if they're having a house party next door-
The fifty feet are not gonna work. And in, in my neighborhood, I know that people are pretty good about saying, "Hey, we're gonna have a party, whatever, we'll let you know." And there, it's not off the charts, but you can hear the music, ten or eleven o'clock, you know, they're out there on the patio or whatever. So we've got issues to address like that, and I wanna bring these things up because no matter what we discuss here tonight, we have to remember that we've got those issues. It's not just a downtown, it, it has to do with, and then the McEwen, New McEwen Town Center. A lot of people moving into those areas that are being built, they know they're moving upstairs of, of a retail or a restaurant, they know where they're moving. Some people already there in, in existing homes, in residential townhomes, condos, and then the other places move in. You've got Grant Park over there, you've got condos over there, and you've got the dwell apartments, and then you're gonna have McEwen Town Center come in there. So those are all things that we need to think about when we're, when we're talking about this tonight. So, and I thi, I think we have an issue, see, to me, fifty feet would put people out of business. Fifty feet, you're all shaking your heads. But fifty, fifty feet-
Fifty feet from the property line.
From the property line.
And that's what we're here to talk about.
To me, honestly, I could never support that. Because that will put our businesses out of-
And I'm not, we're not changing it from what it already is. It already says that you have to give-
Exactly. I thought you said we were changing it to ten o'clock.
We're changing it to ten o'clock, but you guys gave us that guidance in 2009. But the only thing, the, the current ordinance says fifty feet, period, for amplification and live bands. And we need you to tell us, that's why we divided residential up from commercial, you need to tell us, what do you think is reasonable? Cause I can't decide that, that's, that's what you guys tell us to do.
Well, we have to, we have to focus on the timeframe.
Yeah, timeframe too.
We have to focus on the footage. And honestly, if you go outside and measure footage, you know, Dave and I were just out there a few minutes ago before the meeting, and I said, we stood out the door, and I said, "From here to the square, probably about a hundred feet."
Fifty feet is a first down and a half.
Yeah. You got that. Yeah, very good. So, so you've got, you, we've got issues with that, that we, we really need to get into and discuss, because we need to protect residents, absolutely, but we need to protect our businesses. And I think-
That's why we have it separated.
And I, right. And we have to discuss and, and come up with ideas for commercial areas, and general commercial areas, and then we've got MX, ML, and then we've got your residential areas like West Haven, McKay's Mill, where you've got these density issues, and then you've got commercial out there in West Haven, usually removed, but they're close to the townhomes.
I think in our, in our discussion, what we were in agreement on was moving away from the decibel meters and moving to a common sense approach that everyone could understand. What we're, what we're looking for direction on is, is the distance that you're comfortable with and implementing the time that you've given us previous direction on.
And where does MX and ML go? That's what we're looking to know.
The fundamental question is, do you want a noise ordinance?
Right.
And if you do, are we on the right path to use something like this that's a distance as opposed to a decibel formula? That's kinda what we're looking for in terms of the direction here, cause what we have right now doesn't work. So we need something that is more enforceable and more understandable to everybody in the community.
The cons.
That's funny, because that's exactly what we were told when people came in and said we needed an objective standard. This subjective standard doesn't work, we're having police officers stand on the sidewalk saying, "I don't know, is that too loud?" And they promised us the decibel thing was the solution to those problems, just pick a, pick a number, and we'll buy decibel meters, and we'll go stand fifty feet, and if it's over that limit, bam, we got a ten. Now I'm told that doesn't work at all.
But Chief Rohinsky brought up, and then, and, yeah, and Chief Rohinsky brought up, what are some of the cons of that? Number one, if you go to court on that, and somebody's gonna, or if you have to cite someone, you're gonna say, "Okay, how, when was that, that device calibrated?"
That's what we do with speeding tickets.
When was that done? Okay, yeah.
But do you know what fifty decibels sounds like?
What?
Does anybody in this room know?
Can I tell you what seventy-five miles an hour feels like?
You're gonna have a speedometer.
If I get a speeding ticket with a radar device, and the officer says, "Yeah, I hit it with the tuning fork before I my patrol shift," that's it, I lose. And it doesn't matter what my speedometer said, and it doesn't matter what my, my radar gun says. We don't have a contest between my radar gun and his. I lose.
And looking at the decibel meters, one of the issues we, we ran into is the cost of how many we would need to outfit the entire department, or each shift with ample decibel meters, the training that would be required for us to testify in court as to our ability to accurately use it. The question is to how often they would need to be calibrated to truly ensure their accuracy. But the ambient noise was really problematic. We sent an officer around the different spots in the city to take ambient noise readings. In the middle of the afternoon at five points with truck traffic, we were in violation. So anybody who had, you know, amplified music or a vehicle with a car radio on, we wouldn't have had the ability to single them out because the ambient noise was already in violation. The more we discussed it internally, and we recognized just how subjective so much of what we do already is, probable cause, use of force, we're really entrusted with, with using our discretion in a variety of ways on a daily basis. We thought this would just fit well in.
I'd like you to trade on the reasonable person standard daily. I'm just telling you that it's disappointing that we're, we're turning a hundred and eighty degrees, and the real problem is, the real problem here is this. Everybody wants a vibrant, thriving, commercial community downtown and elsewhere, but when they wanna go to bed, that's it, they don't wanna hear about it anymore.
That's exactly right. They don't want to hear about it anymore. They don't wanna hear about it anymore.
Let me remind the people in the audience, this is a meeting and not a gallery for celebration, so I will have you removed if you continue to speak out and clap and celebrate. That's not the way we like to do this here. So Alderman Skinner.
I wanna make sure I understand. If somebody's in a neighborhood and they complain, then the officer would go fifty feet from the boundary of their property, and if they can hear the music after eleven o'clock that's amplified, then that would be a violation.
Yeah, what this says, or what it currently says? What occur, even currently, if an officer were to walk fifty feet from the property line, they could cite right now. They certainly could. They don't have to have the decibel, because this is, when you read the ordinance, in Section four oh two, these are, these are violations no matter what.
Tell me where that is, because I have my other ordinance.
It's eleven, four oh two, Section B. These are violations no matter what. I mean, it says it's a prima facie evidence, if it's fifty feet between eleven PM and seven AM, period.
Amplified.
Amplified. Amplified, live bands, radio or loudspeakers. If that's, if that's what they hear, yes. Now, if it's a party and people are just being loud, no, they can't cite for that.
Are we having that problem, or is this about amplified music? I think that's what we do.
Mostly amplified music, yes.
This time of year in particular, with high school graduations, loud parties even without amplified music tend to be more an issue, just the people gathering.
So that's seasonal, but, but what's really driving this is amplified music, right?
Which is all already-
I think Alderman Skinner still had to follow.
One more question on the special permits. Could somebody come in and apply for fifty-two weeks of special permits?
No.
What's the limit on those?
It gotta be really for a short period of time, maybe like a week, a weekend, a week. You know, it's Main Street Festival, something like that. It's a defined period of time.
That you can't have consecutive?
You can't just load up on special events.
But you know, Main Street has several different amplified music weekends over the year, so-
And each one's a different event that they pay for separately, right.
I understand that, but before or after eleven?
Yeah.
Before eleven.
Well, but they get special event permits, so they can go-
After?
They can go after eleven. But I do wanna say that we're also trying to bring this ordinance to you, to look at, to help the neighbors. You know, the, the, while these, these downtown businesses are getting complained about by other citizens, and it's causing problems. What we would like to do is, fifty feet probably isn't appropriate in some of these resident, or some of these commercial areas, but that's what it says now. And really, we should be citing them now, cause that's what our ordinance says. What we would like to do is make it more reasonable. If a fifty feet isn't right, let's help our businesses also and make them have something that they know, you know, "I've got a hundred and fifty feet, and I can go until midnight." Then they are also more protected, cause right now, it's fifty feet after eleven.
All right. Look, I, I realize that we have to, we have to deal with these things, okay? But I really don't feel like being drawn into a rep, to referee and find out who the crankiest neighbors in every neighborhood are, okay? That's, so we gotta split the difference here. My thoughts in general are these. There is a difference between amplified music, amplified noise and non, okay? And I'm willing to treat them differently. Gatherings of people, gatherings of people without amplified music is one thing, all right? If my, if I wanna have a Super Bowl party and it goes till eleven o'clock, I, I hope my neighbors would tolerate that well, but I don't want it to become a police matter if they don't.
Well, what about three AM?
Well, I, I'm getting there, okay? Fifty feet is, as I said, a first down and a half, okay? Seven-year-olds play baseball on sixty-foot bases, okay? That's nothing. I, I promise you, my neighbors can hear my voice from fifty feet when I'm inside, okay?
But they're not amplified.
Well, not other than the way God made me. Ten A, ten PM to me is too early on a Friday or Saturday.
In both residential and commercial?
Either. Weekends are different, okay? Weekends are different. Ask my kids, their bedtime is different. It's different because it's different, okay? I think we've been over-inclusive. The way I read this, the ice cream man is out of business, anywhere, anytime. He's done.
As it stands right now, you're right.
Done. Every, done. Cannot ride around anywhere, anytime, selling ice cream. Done, okay? I think that we need to distinguish between amplified and non-amplified, and I think we need to distinguish between, I think we need to broaden the hours of operation. Ten PM, just, you know, a wedding reception that has to run people out at ten PM because they happen to be within fifty feet of a home? That is the end of a variety of these venues, I would think. I mean, I just, I, I don't know how you, I don't know how you sell a, a party venue, but you have to tell the people on the front end, "Oh, by the way, clear out by ten."
And I think maybe we picked that because that's what you chose for, for CJ's on the Square.
Well, that was a standing, okay?
They chose that.
Now, the, the amplification, I'm also concerned about deciding that amplification at any time of a sound within fifty feet of a residential neighborhood is prohibited except for special events. That would mean that, that you, you could not in the middle of the day have a, an amplified device.
And that's what it says now.
Okay, well, but, look, I'm not sure I voted for this thing the first time.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's why we need to.
But you brought it back.
I remember that you did.
Well, then I'll-
It's getting mellow to be all right.
I think we, I think what we, I think we risked, if we pass this even substantially as is, I think we risked turning, turning our community over to the crankiest people in town, and letting them set the standard. And that's not fair.
Well, we can take out C, but help, help me then figure out what is it?
Well, that's, that's what it amounts to.
What is it? What do you think is it? Tell me what it is.
Okay, well, the, the, I think on weekends, eleven or twelve is more appropriate, on a Friday or Saturday night, okay? I mean, we don't, look, parents get to parent differently, but I'm not gonna make my sixteen-year-old come home at ten on a Friday.
So both residential and commercial?
Yeah. And I also think that amplified is a little different, because, you know, music, amplified music has a way of disturbing you in a way that is different than just a gathering of people, okay? A gathering of people is one thing, but based knocking on your windows is different. You know, for amplified music, whether it's resident, whether it reaches a residential neighborhood or not, you know, I, I don't, I, I still don't know why we couldn't say to somebody, "Forget what the, forget what the decibel level a hundred feet away is, let's measure the decibel level at the source." Because it can't be greater further away. I think there's probably a way, I'm concerned about turning this over to the subjective standard because you're gonna have repeated complaints with differing levels of enforcement depending upon who's on shift. The same call under the same circumstances handled by a different police officer could be handled differently. And that is a bad way to, that is a bad way to create an enforcement mechanism. I think if we go to amplified music, if we say, if we say in an amplified music arrangement that amplified music outside at the source cannot exceed X decibels, and amplified music, you know, inside at the source cannot exceed X between the hours of X and Y, we're doing a, we're doing a more objectively enforceable thing. Now, I don't know, I don't know what that level ought to be, but unless I don't understand it well, if you're, if you're amplified at the source at a hundred and twenty decibels, it's not gonna be louder than that fifty feet or a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet away. And there, I am, like I said, I'm concerned about, about the hours, and I'm also very concerned about turning this back into a subjective standard, even though you're right. Police officers do have to deal in subjective standards all the time. But this is complaint-driven, and the complainant has already decided that they are a reasonable person, okay? And they will not be convinced otherwise.
The problem, sir, as we identified it, as far as measuring at the source would be private, private property and house parties, our ability to gain access to someone's residence to measure from the source.
I consider the source to be the front door, okay? I mean, I, I'm not trying to get around the Fourth Amendment or anything, but if, if it's a place open to the public, then you don't have that problem. And if it's not a place open to the public, then you already have a- you already have a, a reason to be there, because you're investigating a disturbance of the peace. So, standing there with a, I mean, this is a, this is like trying to enforce speeding without a radar gun. If you take this decibel threshold out, you are basically saying that every police officer has to follow up on an investigation initiated by, in the case of the speeding analogy, by the person who was standing on the corner when the car went by fast. And they said, that's too fast. And they sent a police officer out who said, you're right. I don't know exactly how fast that is, but that's pretty fast. I mean, that's, that's where you're headed.
Alderman, Lord.
All right. I don't have a dog in every fight, but I've got one in this one. Sunday, Sunday night, we were on our porch, reading, enjoying the evening. The music was so loud from Bunginut Pig, and I know it was Bunginut Pig, because we went up to see where it was coming from. It was so loud, we had to go in the house and shut the door. Now, we didn't call the police, because I knew this was coming up, and we were going to have an opportunity to talk about it. Where the problem lies is that these homes were there long before the businesses were there, and all of you, most of you back there are my friends, so I understand where you're coming from. I know it's your business. But the question comes to my mind, do you care about disturbing the residents in your area? And you're all shaking your head, yes, you do, and I believe you do. But when you are determined to continue this, this noise, and I think 11 o'clock is ridiculous for downtown. We've got people who have lived in our area for years, and they have put up with lots of things during their lifetime, and they don't have to live in a noisy, music-filled neighborhood in their latter years. And, and I, I really think that 10 o'clock is late for those people. And, and you all know who I'm talking about, because you know who your neighbors are. But Lord help the people that live backed up to these businesses. I mean, that's their home. That's their, that's their castle. And when they cannot rest at night, they cannot go to sleep. I don't know what those people up on Parkview and Adams do. I really don't. We are five blocks from Bunginut Pig, five blocks, and that noise, we could hear almost every word. And when we went up there, they were even facing in the other direction. So, they were not purposely trying to make that music come out. I don't think you can help it. When you've got amplification and you've got acoustic noise, it's going to travel. Now, private parties are different. They, they last a short period of time. They're over, and I don't know about times, but I would think that, that residents who were having parties would be considerate enough of their neighbors to be sure that they didn't go on all night long, or take them in the house and shut the door. But, but I really think that a short period of time versus an evening of bands and music, and I know, I know, Will, you, Kimbros, you've done everything you can do. You've keep, you keep the doors shut. I understand that, but I still think the music comes through the walls. That house was not built for bands inside. Little thin walls, you know, it just comes through. And I understand that, and I don't want to put you all out of business, any of you. But being a resident of the downtown area, I understand what they're going through, and I would like to see some consideration for the residents. And we're not just all complaining, officer, I mean, no, whatever you like.
Alderman McClendon.
Alderman McClendon. But anyway, I do have a dog in this fight, and I will, I will stay on top of it.
Alderman.
Margaret, I hear you. What's the answer then for the people, for, say, bride and groom, who's told, hey, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, bye-bye. And they go, sorry, I'm, I'm getting married once in my life. I'm not going to do this. I'm not going to tell everybody.
We're just saying, bring it down.
No, no, no.
They could bring it down, but they don't ever, they don't ever lower. All they have to do is lower the, the microphones. They never do it. I can't tell you how many times we've been to Lilybells. I cannot tell you how many times the neighbors have walked down there and asked them to turn that music down.
And what they do?
No.
I think, hmm.
At what time?
Yeah. I've been at a wedding and I, there was a.
Nine?
They can turn the music down, Dana. They don't have to have music to cover the, the neighborhood.
I, I was at a wedding there last fall, and they had to turn the music down.
Let's go back to asking some questions, being a lot of anecdotes. Who hasn't spoken and wants to speak?
Just wanted to say that there are obviously great concerns on both sides.
And I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're going to, the discussion is good. I think we need to continue to have this, because right now, we are in violation in, in most aspect of our current ruling. And how do we move forward as presented? And I think it's going to take more conversation, because we haven't heard from the, the business owners. We've heard some, some semblance of residents, and I think Margaret speaks very clearly on that. But I think businesses, and we, as a city, as a board, we are trying to make them both work. We need our downtown businesses. We need those tax dollars. So, we need to figure out the best win-win situation. I don't have the answer right now, and I don't, and I want to continue to hear and gather information.
And what concerns me is, as we get more complaints, I don't know how we can not cite, because our ordinance gives us the requirements to do so. Our ordinance now says 50 feet after 11 is a prima facia evidence of a violation, and you're supposed to cite, regardless of decibel, when it's amplified or live bands. We haven't, we haven't cited since '09, because we've been trying to work through this, but it's, that's what our ordinance says right now. And if we, if we want to be fair to everybody, we have to think about these businesses too, because if you don't like 50 feet after 11, we need to change it for them too. We have, we need to think about both the residences and them, because as it stands right now, they're in violation probably every Friday, Saturday night.
Mayor. Go ahead.
Based upon what our city attorney just said, it is clear to me that I'm being asked to solve a problem when the existing ordinance that I helped or participated in writing isn't being enforced in the first place. I wonder how many complaints would, we would have resolved and prevented if we had been, if the, if the police department had been doing what the ordinance says that we wanted them to do. I mean, I know Ms. Martin wants to be able to tell them to turn it down at 8 or whatever, but the ordinance says 11. Amplified music after 11, it doesn't matter what the decibels are, bam. If we're not enforcing that, then how many complaints would be resolved if we did?
What we do, or what we have done, and we've been very fortunate in obtaining voluntary compliance. We've got a great group of business owners who really want to please their neighbors. That being said, inevitably, we're well aware that there's going to be, there's going to come a time when we need to cite somebody. Moving away from the decibel meters, we think, is really the best direction to go.
I, I've got just a few questions, based on some of the discussions today, and one of the terms in the ordinance was central commercial district. Am I correct? And in that district, is not every business permitted to have events and noise up till 11 o'clock at night? Did I, so, right now, if, whether it's Kimbros, or Lilybells, or whatever, they're in the central commercial district, and they can have, they can create noise up to 11 o'clock at night? Is that?
Any district at this point, under our current ordinance, can make amplified noise or have live bands until 11.
Okay. Now, this ordinance.
And they can still do it after 11, so far as it's not loud.
Help me with this, okay. With this ordinance, as you've brought it to us, let's rephrase, let's ask the same question. What does that do to the Lilybells and the Kimbros?
The only difference is it changes it from 11 to 10.
So, Kimbros would still be in business?
Yes.
They just would have to stop at 10 rather than 11?
And I understand that some of you may be thinking 11.
And Lilybells, Lilybells would be in business?
Yes.
They would just have to stop at 10 rather than 11?
They would have to tone, bring it down. Not, you don't have to stop. I mean, you just have to bring the music down.
Except the decibel, but still be a factor.
And one thing that I, I think that, you know, I asked some questions today. I asked about the, the city employee that's blowing out the garage at 6:00 AM, and the answer to that was that it's okay. That, that's one of the exemptions, and there are lots of exemptions. But the way I understand it, I guess the most important point is that right now, if we pass this just as it is, everybody will continue to operate. It would just change their time by one hour.
Right.
I think that's a gross, I think that's an overstatement.
Okay, well, help, help me go through it, so.
Okay.
Because there was a lot of concern about their bus, you know, comments like, you know, my business will be shut down.
Well, first of all, I'm not convinced that there is no difference between telling a business that they can't do what brings people in an, an hour less. I, I don't, I don't accept the assumption that it's only an hour and that means nothing. That may mean everything to them. I don't know that. But the, the, the other thing is that the, it's, in the way this is written, in commercial and industrial zoning districts, it does not matter whether it's amplified or not. Between 10 and 7, if it's audible 50 feet from the boundary line, it's done, under the way it's being proposed to be re, re-legislated. It's part 11403, paragraph 2, says, "No persons shall cause, suffer, allow, or permit sound from any source," which is plainly audible when measured at least 50 feet from the real property line between 10 and 7. Doesn't matter whether it's amplified or not. So, if you just had 25 party guests at Lilybells at 10:01, amplified or not, they're done if they can't whisper, all 50 of them, or 25.
We're talking about music.
No, we're not. Not the way it's written. It does not matter what the source is, from any source. That can be 20 people talking at chit-chat cocktail level. And if it's more, if it's audible, and I promise you it will be, if it's audible a few, a first down and a half away, they're done. How many people do you have to send away to comply? Half of them? Three-fourths of them? I mean.
Yeah, and all these are great questions, and if it's okay with everybody else, I'd like to go ahead and maybe give the people who want to speak from the audience about two minutes to address what their concerns are, because obviously, we're not solving the problem tonight. We're just talking about it, and we need to make sure we understand everybody's concerns about it, so.
Mayor, will you tell them we have to come up here too?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, whoever wants to speak to this, and we'll give you two minutes, and just say who you are, and we'll start there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not certain that I'll be able to be terribly effective with two minutes, but I'll do my level best. Let me first address your concerns, Ms. Martin, by saying, yes, I do care. My name is Mark Goodson. My wife, Amy, and I own the Bunginut Pig. This is a business that has been around for 25 years now, and we have owned and operated it for six. I have four children. Three of those are teenagers, and one is a 12-year-old. I've spent six years in the United States Air Force as a military policeman. I have a Masters of Science in Management Science. I spent six years as an executive in the paper industry, and 12 in the healthcare industry, most recently with a Fortune 14 company. So, I've been on the, on the side of the table that you're on, wearing suits every day and making tough decisions, when there isn't, isn't necessarily a right answer, only a best answer. So, if I had known of the disturbance that you experienced, I would have fired the manager on duty. So, yeah, I care a lot. In fact, I care so much that I can show you logs where Deputy Chief Rehensky recommended to me two years ago, where I have logged decibel readings from four points in my parking lot, every single time we do acoustic music outside. Acoustic music, not full-blown bands. So, if an artist or musician decided to crank something up because they wanted to be a rock star, I apologize profusely. But that is not how my business shall operate, and I certainly hope it is not what you've experienced from the Bunginut Pig consistently. So, please, please, accept my apology for that day.
It's acceptable, and I thank you very much for that.
I do think that it is, I think in many respects, the, the recommendation being made, made to this board is dumbing down the city. In, in the second paragraph, it says, "Whereas, the Board of Mayor and Aldermen of the City of Franklin, Tennessee, believe it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city to update the existing noise ordinance, to bring it in line with current technology, and make it more enforceable." Well, I would suggest to you that by doing this, it would certainly make it more enforceable, but it would by no means bring it up to any level of technology that we know in this day and age, given the fact that technology is doubling every 14 to 18 months. You know that when you buy a computer, you throw it away two years from now, because it's no good. I, I, I think it would be a grave injustice to take a track of something simply being audible. Now, there are a number of things. I'd be happy to work with this group in any way I possibly can. I would roll up my sleeves and work as hard as any of you to come up with something that would help everyone, business owners and people in the community. I, I am in a bit of a unique position, to the extent that not only am I a business owner, affected from that perspective, but I am also a resident of this community, and I've lived in Chestnut Bend for 10 years now. And there isn't a night that I don't hear music coming from Mickey Ruse, but I don't complain about it. There, there is very rarely a time, in fact, there's never been a time where a high school football game has gone on, where three blocks away from the venue, I don't know who made the tackle, and I don't complain about it. In other words, I, I think it's a sticky wicket to have these carve-outs. I, I think it, so as not to be hypocritical, it needs to be measurable. And, and the business owners need to live up to whatever it is you decide. And, you know, insofar as calibration of, of decibel meters and that, I mean, I, I bought a decibel meter at the, at the recommendation of the police department in terms of logging things, and then later loaned it to this group a year or two ago, whenever it was. I mean, my understanding was, this group was going to go out, take readings, try to make some reasonable assessment of, of what was in fact reasonable, and pass some decibel level. Well, the fact that matters, I, I never got it back, not that I care. I went and bought another one. Point is, I, I have tried really hard. My wife has tried really hard. Our employees have tried really hard, and I will continue to try really hard. It does have a financial impact. It is my life. Does that mean I want people that border me to be disturbed, or, or to hate us for what we do? No. In fact, I like to think that what we do has been more above board than anybody that has ever owned this place preceding me, in every respect. There are a number of things, if, if we had time, where I could, I could point out things that I don't understand, that I think you would want to understand, just like I would want to understand it, but I don't think we have time today. I simply want to volunteer my time, anytime you need me. I, I, I will be here to help you in any way that I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not as eloquent as Mark is.
Mark.
Mark.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Will Jordan, owner of Kimbros Cafe. But I will tell you that the police come often, because we have a cranky neighbor, as you mentioned. I hate to say that, but it's just turned into that situation. We had an argument at our place two years ago, and they've never been back since. But every time the police have ever come to Kimbros, they have never cited us. It's not because of the law. It's because they've walked outside our building with us and told us that we are not in violation of the law, that this is just someone else who's upset, calling them, bugging them. Every single time the officers have come, they have always told us that we're not in violation. We always turn it down. We are on our bands. Like Mark said, sometimes you get a rock star. They go in there, they crank it up real loud. Well, all we do, one time, we switched the power off on them, because we couldn't get them to shut up. And we have booted bands out of there. We have lost countless, countless customers. We've lost tons of money over this, because the police come in, everyone gets nervous, they feel like they got to leave, they feel like they can't make any noise. We lose bands. We do four or five benefits for charity benefits a month. You said a charity benefit could be something that you'd, you'd let go later. Well, we never have music past 11 o'clock. We get complaints at 10:30. People, the police show up at 10:30 at our place. They, they never come over at 11, and if it's 11, it's because they're. never come over at 11. And if it's 11, it's because there's voices outside. Uh, last night, there was a police officer staking out our place. I don't know if he was using a decibel meter or doing some sort of readings or whatever, but he was sitting outside of our thing with the window down, and was just sitting right there in front of our business. And that's harassment. We're always friendly to the police. We welcome them in. Come on in. You can see what's going on here. You can see the band. There's never been an issue. They've always told us it is not too loud. Most of these guys are probably from somewhere else, and they're used to city sound. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that all of our neighbors that had complaints with us before, Matt and Ally are here, I know, and Matt will probably want to speak after this. But, um, Ally, I called her on the phone recently, and I said, Ally, I just want to let you know we're making a huge effort here. Whatever we can do, we just soundboarded, we baffled all the walls, we put a, we spent a fortune on a studio door, put it on, it's four inches thick, it almost took the wall down from the building, because we were, you know, it's so big. We've done everything we possibly can. We've taken out any loud bands that are a bit obnoxious about it. And Ally has said that she noticed that I made a, we've made a huge difference in the neighborhood. We haven't gotten as many calls. We haven't had any issues there. But I just, we've never had it after 11. You said that you can still have noise and amplified sound as long as it's not very loud. Well, that all turns into a subjective, you know, discussion. And I think that it's just a whole issue of not being neighborly and not working things out amongst themselves. If Ally ever calls me, I turn it down within seconds. I mean, I go in there and bulldog whatever band it is. We, we keep that door closed. We're, I mean, I have had to throw people out of there because of that. And, uh, Mark McKenzie, who was here last time and spoke for that whole group, that represented that whole group, I don't know if he's out of town, but I have a feeling he would not be here tonight representing them, because he has been to Kimbrows since then. We've worked it all out. He's told me that we are not a problem in his backyard. He is right behind our building. So we, I don't know what else we can do. I'm like Mark. I would, I want to do whatever it takes to help you guys and all the businesses in this community, and all the neighbors work this out in a reasonable, you know, way, and not in some sort of, uh, I was going to say something bad, but anyway, and not some sort of a, you know, match. We all know what we're saying here. And, you know, crankiness, we can all be cranky. We can all go out and start calling the police. I mean, we could do this thing all day long. We're wasting these guys' times. I mean, they've got, they're here to protect us and not to go out here and, and get, be a referee, as Dana was saying. So that's, I'm sorry, guys, but, Mark, I love you to death. I, I know all of you guys personally, I think, and I want to work with you. Uh, I live in downtown Franklin, on First Avenue, and, uh, I can hear music coming from the park all the time. I would never complain about it. I love the sounds coming from there. I love to hear kids running in and out of there, and, you know. So anyway, I just, I think that we've come a long way in this, in this town, this community. Ken, you stood up in front of 3,000 people at the, uh, Main Street lighting of the theater, which we just spent $10 million on, a music venue in downtown Franklin. You said, we, I want to support the, this community needs to support the arts and the music. And I'm with you 100% on that. I think we do. You live right across the street from a venue that we're, is here representing themselves, and, uh, I, I know you know that, that there's parties that go on all in the community, and I think we all just need to work together. That's what we are as a, as a community, guys. And we need to, we need to do this together. So, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Will.
Mr. Mayor and the Board, my name is Matt Woodburn. I live at 235 Third Avenue South. Uh, if you don't know where that property is, uh, in relation to Kimbrows, it is a catty-corner property adjacent. I would say that the corners of our properties touch. Um, as Will has just explained, he has done quite a bit. Uh, I am here to sell, tell you that he has. There has been improvement in what he has done, uh, with Kimbrows and keeping the noise level down. Um, but what I'm here to tell you is that with his four-inch-thick door, the volume that is played inside there, I can hear inside my house. And that's where the intrusion is. Um, I know one thing that was explained earlier, I, I think you had mentioned, uh, about music being played. I think what is being, uh, explained here in number one, under 11-403, is that sound from a sound amplification device. So it would not mean that music would have to stop after 10 or 11, or whatever time you deem appropriate. Just means that amplified sound that is excessive, uh, at a noise level. Uh, I would agree that it is very difficult for the police to have to come out with these, uh, meters, to have to check it. Uh, I admit that, uh, two of the police visits over to Kimbrows did come from me and my wife. Um, many times, we have contacted Will and asked him to turn the volume down over there, and he has, to the best of his ability, I believe, tried to be responsive, uh, although there are times that have gone past the current sound ordinances that, uh, we had to call over and get them to turn the, uh, music down. It's, uh, primarily the bass that really causes the problem. That's what we hear through the walls inside our bedroom when we're trying to go to sleep. Um, and I would just ask, you know, I don't have anything against, you know, Will. Uh, I hope that his business continues to work and that he can have customers come enjoy music there. I'm just not sure the volume that it's been at lately, uh, for the past couple of years, since they moved from Ron Kimbrows Pickin' Parlor, which was to be acoustic music, which is unplugged, non-amped music. And then they went ahead and changed to, uh, amped music and brought in bands that were, uh, very, very loud. Um, don't have anything against, uh, the Bungnut Pig. Uh, go over and try their Monte Cristo. It's very good. Um, so I, I hope that these businesses can continue to flourish, but the thing that we all have to do is make sure that we can all coexist within, uh, this town. And I would ask that you would strongly consider, uh, coming up with, uh, you know, moving this to 10 o'clock, and then, more so than the 10 o'clock versus, uh, I believe, the current 11 o'clock time cutoff, the sound amplification, that's probably what we need to cut off. I think that these businesses could still play music for their patrons in an acoustic fashion, unplugged. And we just have to simply, and, and that way, the, uh, the police don't have to come in with a measure and see if this is at this decibel level or that. Uh, either you can see that they're using amps. It's very easy to go in and see if, uh, the equipment is plugged in, or if it's just acoustic, you know, a, a unplugged-in acoustic guitar versus something that is using speakers and, uh, sound amplifiers. I think that that would be an easier way to, to monitor this. Perhaps, uh, you can speak to that, and, uh, want to certainly make it easier on the police officers in our town. They've got a difficult enough job as it is. I thank you for, uh, your kind attention.
My name is Kyle McPhee, and I am the owner of the Tin Roof 2. Uh, real quick, just before I get, I get started, and I will try to keep the two, the two-minute, um, barometer, whatever it is, um, are there any specific complaints about the Tin Roof 2? Like, are there, is that a current? Because I know the last time we had this meeting, that we really, really have worked. We bought the decibel reader, and, uh, I didn't know if that, are there?
Not this season.
Not this season?
No.
So.
I'm referring back to last summer.
Right.
Or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just use that as an example, and I, I don't know if any current.
Correct, yeah. Because we really, um, you know, when the cops came out after we had our last meeting, and they were there in the decibel, you know, and they had their decibel reader, I had my decibel reader.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, they did that for a month or whatever, and we really have.
Yeah, you were here when I was talking about that, right?
Yes, I was, yeah, in the back. Yeah, I know.
You stand across the street and not hear you.
Yep.
You can go off the way that the sound bounces. So it's a little unique there, too.
Right, right. But, um, so this really doesn't have too much to do with myself, I, I don't think, because we do have that two-lane. Um, but again, what I want to reiterate, too, with the other people, is we want to work with the city. We don't want to work against anybody. Um, we've been here going on five years now, and, uh, we love Franklin. We do obviously benefits, um, you know, just like everybody else, um, here. And, uh, we don't see ourselves as a nuisance at all, but actually as an asset that brings revenue, um, to the city. Um, so, uh, if, you know, my door is obviously always open. Um, it's definitely not closed, and, um, you know, I would be willing to work with anybody.
Do you have outside music?
We don't.
You do.
Um, we don't, but we do have, uh, we have garage doors, yeah. Um, and we act.
Are you open to the, I mean, you are out.
They open up.
Right, we do. We do, we do open up. But it's never faced towards outside. It's always faced towards inside. And actually, we have an outside barrier that we just built. Um, and I think that's actually helped the sound also, to kind of keep it closed in.
Is it amplified?
Yes, it's amplified, yes.
That might keep it from bouncing off, too.
Right, right. But, um.
When did you install that?
Uh, we installed it probably about two months ago now.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, and I think that'll help out in the summertime, for sure. But, uh, again, yeah, we want to work with the city, um, on this matter, and, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One of the next persons coming up, Mr. Mayor. Will, what time do you close?
Time to be closed, or we're telling you to stop on music?
Both.
Stop our music at 11 o'clock every, I mean, every weekend. Every week you stop at 10 o'clock.
And then what time do, what time do you close, then?
When somebody closes, one in the morning.
Okay, one.
Bunginut, what time does it close?
We close at, um, we, Friday and Saturday, when we stop the music at midnight, let's keep in mind, 8:00, 8:50, um, full-band type setup would be innovative. The only thing that we do outdoors is to just begin.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, and members of the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. I'm Bud Carmen. My wife and I own Lilybells. We're the troublemakers along Church Street and Third Avenue South. Uh, we were ordered on June the 10th of 2004 to close at 9:00, the wedding of our son. And if we did not close immediately at 9:00, that, uh, the alleyway, which was being considered by this body, would be rejected, that that would be done. And it was lobbied at this board not to accept that alleyway that comes off Church Street, because the city didn't need it. Served on one business. Of course, that was notwithstanding the fact that 55 feet of our land in the back was taken to build the Judicial Center. We lost quite a little bit. A reasonable compromise had been signed by the present mayor of the city, the present mayor of the county, the signed document that the alleyway would be constructed for Lilybells. We barely prevailed in that by a vote of four to three. This body accepted the alleyway. I think the battle lines were drawn then. But in, um, 2004, when our son got married, I begged, I pleaded, let us finish the wedding. No, you either shut it down right now, or else. It was just pure blackmail. Now, nobody on this board presently here did that. I don't mean to imply that it happened, but, uh, the Downtown Neighborhood Association has not accepted Lilybells. We have loud music. We have young people who love to have wedding music, mostly on a Saturday night. We volunteered to cut the time back to 10:00, back, I don't know, two, three years ago. We don't go past 10:00. If it has happened, it's been inadvertent, and I, I would not have been there and didn't know about it, because we voluntarily accepted 10:00. It hurt. Hurts business. I've lost weddings because of that 10:00 curfew. Uh, you can simplify this. All you got to do is pass this ordinance, which says we can't have that kind of music at Lilybells, and we won't be there. So it's your call. I understand the process. Don't mind the question being raised. And our neighbors who have come up there and listened to our Lilybells music, you come early. You come as early as 7:00 or 7:30. Philosophically, you see, we just simply have a difference of position. I love the wedding music. I go over there and listen to it. I love to watch the kids dance. I love to see the celebration of life. And I tried to use that term with one of my neighbors, and he wouldn't let me use that term, celebration. No, it's a commercial venture. Well, sure it is. We pay the bills, mostly. It's been a little tough because of the economy. Lilybells is a good balance. I respectfully present to you for the neighborhood. Maybe you want a bank there, or perhaps an office building would look okay, wouldn't it? You know, may I respectfully submit, you need some taxpayers in this town to pay the salaries that we pay, to keep the streets where we don't have too many potholes. We pay thousands upon thousands of dollars in taxes every year. But you see, the philo-, the, the, the philosophy is the question. Do you want a business like Lilybells in downtown Franklin? Now, I have been told you don't, by a member of this body. Not a present member of this body, but Lilybells is exactly what we do not need in downtown Franklin. Ah. You know, we're willing to live with your decision if you want to push it that far. And I think the key people in downtown Franklin are going to speak to that issue. It's time up or down. You need to let us know. We'll move on. If you don't like our wedding music on a Saturday night, Ann Alderman McClendon hit it dead on the head. You know that last hour is critical. It really is critical. They love to have it until 11:00. Could we go to 11:00? Uh, we said, no, you're going to stop at 10, because we knew that was a philosophy that was moving forward. We felt like in the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, we're just going to have to go to 10:00. I wish you wouldn't do it on a Saturday night. It is, Saturday night is different. Anybody go down on Fourth Avenue Saturday night of the Main Street Festival around, say, 10:00? Did you go down there? I did. I have never seen such a party in my life. People love it. I mean, it is a great, what are we going to do? You know, where, where is this coming from? Are, are we going to go the, the, the path of silence in this town? Are we going to say, no, well, you know, if you're making a living with your outdoor music, move on. We don't want that. We'll live with whatever decision you make. I notice here, though, one specific paragraph that says, "Amplification of sound in any outdoor setting located in or within 15 feet of a residential neighborhood is prohibited." Does that mean you're going to put residential property right on the corner of Third and Church? If you're going to do that, then you're going to shut us down for sure, aren't you? And by the way, while I'm at that, please don't do that. Just, oh, please don't do that. This is a commercial district where we sit right here. Don't put residential at the street level. Put it up or back some way. Oh, well, you're not here for that. Thank you very much for hearing me. I think we may not be your major problem, except for this. There are some of our neighbors who don't want our music at 7:00 at night, period. I know that. They don't want it. They've told me that. We don't want your music at any time of the day or night. So we're not going to solve that problem by setting 10:00 or 11:00. Some people just don't want it. And I bet you that you can find that philosophy around any of the other businesses that have been represented here tonight. It's a matter of philosophy. We like Lilybells to be right where it is. We like to sit there for many years, but we will live with your decision. Lilybells can't, because if you get this too intrusive, if I got to be concerned about whether I spend money over there under the threat that you're going to shut us down by enough board members who come in and they like 8:00 or 9:00 better than 10:00 or 11:00, then I can't afford the risk, and nobody else will either. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to, come on up, and, uh, I'm going to cut this discussion off at five minutes till seven, because we still have a few more items, uh, to finish up on this, uh, work session. And then we have the board at 7:00, so, go ahead.
Sure. My name is Daniel Dugger, and I've actually lived in, in Franklin since 1983. Uh, and I actually lived on Parkview, uh, right behind the Bunginut Pig for about four years. And one thing that I think is really important for you to consider when you boil this issue down to the nitty-gritty, is it really gets down to the con-, our constitutional rights, and, and whose rights will prevail. Um, one of the things that struck me is, um, in, in all of the talking, is basically the way that this ordinance is written. Uh, an individual's rights, if they're not participating in, say, the Main Street Festival, those rights are overlooked as long as a permit fee is paid. Uh, you know, if, if a lot of people are enjoying the event, then if there's someone on the fringe that is not, well, I'm sorry, there's been a permit paid, and, um, you're, you're going to have to just deal with. Um, and the way that it's also written, um, you know, that Main Street Festival will only take place for maybe that one time for the entire year, but it's, that would be considered an infraction, just as if the Bunginut Pig, or Kimbrows, or any other establishment, uh, was, was called. Um, I also, um, when you guys were discussing the testing, uh, and using, determining what would be the witness test, uh, it kind of struck me, especially after Alderman McClendon, uh, spoke, you know, if the police department pulls behind you after you leave the Bunginut Pig and you're swerving down the road, you know, they have reasonable cause, uh, to pull you over, uh, because they suspect you're driving under the influence. They'll then, you know, do a field sobriety test, but what they really hang their hat on is going to be the blood alcohol test that they either obtain through your breath or through your blood. If they tried to prosecute a case and they were without that concrete evidence, they would be very, it would be very difficult, if not impossible. And I think if you don't have something that you can measure the sound with, you know, are you going to train the police? Are you going to have one noise com- Are you gonna have one noise compliance official that is trained in all of the criteria here, the volume of the noise, the intensity, the duration, you know, several things that would probably require someone to, you know, receive additional training. When I learned of this last night, I actually went on to the Tennessee Court of Appeals website, and there's actually a case precedent, it's West versus Luna, and it was out of Franklin County, and they wrestled with the whole issue of, you know, what is too loud, and they relied on something that was objective, and that was the decimal reading.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to wrap it up.
Oh, sure. And that was really it. I just think, also, I saw that you're restricting, you know, if someone drops a box and it's too loud, then someone can receive a fine. Well, was the police officer there when the box was dropped? You're also, it appears from the way that the ordinance is read or written that if someone, you know, is building a house, you know, we're trying to bring more development in to Williams County. So if someone is building a house, they're unable to do so on Sunday. And so I think you're treading in deep water and you're infringing on businesses' ability to operate when they choose to.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name's Kelly Harwood, I own Gallery 202, I'm a new business in town, I've been open for about eight months. But I am able to hold special events at the gallery in what we do. We've had charity events, and they will have an amplified music, or someone auctioning off charitable items. So that's gonna affect me, and I just want, I want to be able to help any way I can. And if there's something I can do, I just wanted to step up and speak and let each one of you know that I want to work through this with everyone and make it best for both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got just another minute.
I'll just say my piece of... I'm not really...
We're gonna cut you off pretty quickly, so hurry.
I'm not very well dressed, I'm a guardian.
I'm Laura Hill, I own The Red House, and I've been listening to all of this, Margaret, I have so much passion for your situation, but I just, you know, I do events at The Red House, we do weddings, lots of charity things, and that kind of thing, but I just want to make it clear that that one hour is very crucial. And that 11 o'clock, especially for establishments like Kimbros and Bunginut Pig, it's very important. And that's all I want to say, and I'm glad to help you in any way, too.
Thank you. This will be back at another time, so we'll go ahead and do...
If you don't mind, I might poll you, because I need, we can't just, we talked about it in 2009, and we didn't go anywhere with it. I need you to actually give me some direction. So, what I might do is call each of you, see where you are on it, and then try to draft something, and let's bring it back so it's closer to what you want, changing it maybe to 11, or maybe if you want in commercial to 12, it's totally up to you. I just want to call each of you and talk to you about it.
Well, we're not changing it to 11, that way.
Well, that'll be up to you.
We've heard a variety of suggestions tonight.
It's already 11, but...
It's already 11.
The current says 11, this is written as 10 because that's in the feedback...
Right now, everybody that talks, if they really shut the music off at 11, they're not in violation, so, I mean, there's no violation there.
What Lily Belles does is not in violation.
No, not at all.
Okay, number 10. Consideration of bid award to A&amp;A Sheet Metal Products of La Porte, Indiana, in a total amount of $18,204 for chemical storage lockers for the Parks Department. Is there any question?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, due to the fact that it did come over budget, we're gonna request that you accept it, but we're gonna only purchase one at this time to stay within budget.
Very good. Next, consideration of bid award to Utility Services Associated LLC of Burien, Washington, in a total estimated amount of $10,400 for the water distribution system, leak detection survey, and other related contract services for the specified estimate of 40 miles of distribution pipe.
We are requesting that we continue with our leak detection surveys in our distribution system. I would like to point out that when we had put the bid documents together, we had attempted to get a unit price in which we could expand the survey limits. And going back through and reviewing the big documents with purchasing, we didn't feel comfortable that we could do that as a unit price. So before us, before tonight, there's a limit of $10,400 on the contract value. You'll be seeing another item coming up next Tuesday, I believe, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, that will kind of carry us out to the $35,000 budgeted amount.
So we can get more work done within budget.
Right.
This bid process that we provide.
We had attempted to do a unit cost, but it, the way it was worded, we grew uncomfortable with expanding it, so.
Okay. Consideration of automatic aid agreement with the City of Brentwood, Chief Garzian.
Yes, in 2009, we entered into an automatic aid agreement with Brentwood Fire Department, and at that time, we both would consider our response times and how we could look at our boundaries and change those periodically. And so Brentwood has agreed to come a little bit further into our community from an automatic aid standpoint, and we ask that you consider that, and it will probably be voted in two weeks, in two weeks, and then it'll take effect July 1st.
And what does that mean, that will happen?
Well, actually, their fire station number two out on Wilson Pike will come a little bit further into our territory, city limits.
Is there anything about that?
No, ma'am, this is...
More coverage, more coverage into Franklin.
Yeah, this is collaborative agreement, and those boundaries may change periodically.
What is AHJ?
Authority Having Jurisdiction.
And essentially, it's this strike.
That's correct. On your map is the strike area.
So we'll re... Anything else for Chief? We'll reconvene at 10 after 7.
All right.